Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Bennington Select Board's meeting, Monday, July 24th, 2017. We're gathered here at the Bennington Firehouse. It's just about 6 o'clock, and I look at our agenda, and it's very aggressive. We could be here till 7:00 a.m., maybe 6:00 a.m. That being said, we're going to deal with it in an orderly fashion. I'm going to be much stricter than I am on occasions relative to our timelines for the discussion. If we get into an agenda item that goes beyond our time that we've allocated, and with the indulgence of the Board, I will ask that we continue the matter till the next agenda, so we give everybody the opportunity to at least weigh in. Having said that, I'm Tom Jacobs, and I'm the Chair, and I'd like to have my colleagues introduce themselves.
Good evening, everyone. Chad Gordon.
Hi, I'm Donald Campbell.
I'm Jim Carroll.
And I'm Jean Conner.
And I'm still Stuart Hurd, and this is still Linda Munez.
Thank you both, Stuart and Linda. If we could stand, Chad, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is placed on the line by the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Chad. We have a consent agenda that's been circulated. I have reviewed the warrants. The minutes of July 10th are included in the packet. There also, I see a second-class liquor application, or license application, that's been circulated. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Some moved. Second?
Second.
Are there any changes, additions?
Just a correction. Lynn Green's name is L-Y-N, and no E.
I always look to my right to get back. Thanks very much, Jean. Is there any other discussion? If not, let's vote on it. All in favor, signify by aye. And that's five in favor of the consent agenda. We have the customary citizens, and I see a list of folks that would like to speak. I just want to, seeing one part of the agenda under Number 11, Executive Session, to talk about litigation, I expect this is for the solar project, and I hate to see folks sitting here wondering how the Board is going to be dealing with this. And I'm going to ask Vice Chair Donald Campbell to share his thoughts on how he's going to proceed tonight.
Well, it is a long agenda, so I guess what seems fair would be to go into Executive Session and have the benefit of our legal consultant at that point, and then I think we'll make the commitment not to come out of Executive Session and take a vote.
Do you want to do that now? Is that what you're suggesting?
No. So I guess what I'm saying is, sorry, move this a little closer, just to make a commitment so that we don't come out of Executive Session and then take a vote, which would require people to sit around while we're in a potentially long Executive Session, waiting for us to come out to see if we take a vote. So, that's right. So we won't vote tonight. We'll just work with Rob and do what we can, and then we'll vote in open session when we come back. If we need to take a vote, we'll do it at some other time when the public doesn't have to wait. So Executive Session could take quite a long time, you know, while we mull through things. If people want to see the vote, they would have to sit somewhere else, and then we'd go back into Session in the evening and have everybody come back in. It just doesn't make any sense.
Mr. Vice Chair, may I?
Yeah, please.
The reason, and I met with Tom and Don this morning, the reason why we would not make any announcement after our Executive Session is for you, the public, because this is really a contentious issue and an important issue, that we would postpone any vote to a follow-up meeting where you folks could weigh in and speak. Is that clear?
Question?
Sure.
Donald?
I'm not sure about weighing in, Jim, but what's that?
Well, I think it's important for folks to remember, these are settlement negotiations. So if, in fact, the Select Board comes up with a proposal that they want to put back to the developer and say, "If you do this, 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 and this, and this, maybe we'll support it," the developer still has the opportunity to say, "Yes, I will," or "No, I won't," or "Maybe I'll do something else." And I think what's going to happen here is that ultimately, if there is a resolution or a mutual agreement, that would be an agenda item voted at a regular public meeting where the Board would lay out the proposal and take citizen input. If the answer is, "We can't come to an agreement," then that would be an agenda item where the Board would announce to everyone that settlement negotiations have not succeeded, and we will be following in the appeal to the Supreme Court.
Is this appropriate enough? I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Just, I think Chad has a question for her.
Stuart might have answered it. I guess my question was, would it be at the next scheduled August 14th meeting? It wouldn't be a special meeting?
I think it would. It depends, really, on what happens tonight and whatever response we get from the developer. It could end up, but it will be an agenda item. I think that's important for you folks that are from Chelsea and Apple Hill. It will be on the agenda as an item to be discussed, so that there's not going to be an Executive Session tonight, and the Board comes out and says, "Oh, we're going to settle with them," because we may have conditions that we would like to see included in any settlement that they may or may not agree to.
If I couldn't...
But it sounds like what you're saying, if I'm understanding you correctly, is that you have decided to begin the settlement?
No, we have not.
No. The point of the matter is, that's what this Executive Session is for, is to see whether or not the Board has a position that might include a settlement. We don't know that. So they'll come out of Executive Session tonight, there'll be no decision made, and we'll relay to our attorney what the Board's position is. Our attorney will carry that message to their attorney.
Don?
So are you...
Let me see what Chad has in mind.
Well, I just wanted to say, I would prefer that if it is at a regular scheduled meeting, the attendance is better. The special meetings that I've had, you know, they're not warned as, I mean, they're warned the same way, but the attendance isn't the same. So I would, for the benefit of the public, would want it at a regularly scheduled meeting.
And Jeanie wanted to be here, too.
Okay.
Go ahead. Laura?
What I'm not clear about is, that it seems like there's a prior decision that you need to make, which is, yes or no, do we enter into negotiations before you start thinking about what the negotiated settlement might be?
I think all we're doing right now is we're committing to, I think I'm going to be restating this, but we're committing to going into our Executive Session where we'll have the advantage of legal counsel, and we'll be able to plumb the depths of whatever questions we have with him. But rather than coming out of that Executive Session an hour or something later and then taking action, which you might want to be present for, we're committing that we won't take that action tonight, so that when we go into Executive Session, people can go home in peace and know that we're not going to spring something on them after an Executive Session. Does that make sense? Yeah, go ahead.
I think I may be able to clarify this for my friends and neighbors.
Thank you.
This is actually what they have on the list. I think it was put on the list. My understanding is, and I think this is true for all of us, is that when the Board goes into Executive Session, we're going to discuss first whether or not to enter into negotiations with Malone's. And if there is a sense that you might enter into negotiations with Malone's, you're also going to talk about what it is that the town would want from them. But no decision will be made on that in Executive Session. You'll come back at a regular meeting, say, "This is where we are," and then ask for citizen input.
Precisely.
Is that fair?
I think that's about right, yeah. Yeah. The principal point being that we're not going to do it tonight, yeah.
Sorry, go ahead. Identify.
Can we expect, hopefully, that two other members that are normally here will be here at that time?
One is here.
One's lurking.
I like the view, but in fact...
And the other one wanted to be here but couldn't, and she actually would like to be here when we do this. So, yeah, Jeanie's part of this, yeah, very much. Okay, so that's really meant to just put everybody's mind at ease, that when we go into Executive Session, things aren't going to go off the rails afterwards for you.
That sort of was precipitated, I think, with this list of folks that were going to be talking about matters that were not on the agenda, and that precipitated that way of arranging it, and hopefully, there'll be a productive session with counsel tonight.
Does that mean you're ignoring the citizen's comments?
If it's to speak to matters that have already been before the Board last week, I have to defer to, or two weeks ago, I have to defer to Donald as to how he wants to address it.
I think that we're in citizen's comment, right? So I think it goes back to you, and people say whatever they want to say at this point.
And you're comfortable with that?
I am comfortable with that, but I do, you know, if we want to be done with this by 6:20, you're going to have to get cracking.
Okay. Citizens' comments, please, that this is an opportunity for the next couple of minutes to speak to matters that are not on the advertised, warned agenda. So if you would like to speak, come up, identify yourself, and we'll enter into that conversation. Peter, you're at least first.
In my time, a completely different matter to Rosemary Stroh.
Okay.
Morris, oh, sorry.
No, no, she's on the agenda.
Yeah, citizen's comment on related to, because my question was answered.
Okay. And is this relating to the lot sale? The other, that's actually on the agenda, so...
I just have to copy this one.
You don't have to.
No, you don't have to.
We'll come, we'll come.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
One down.
Actually, we have Bill Stewart that signed in first, so I think probably we should recognize in the way they were signed.
Good evening, Select Board. Good evening, residents of Bennington. You probably all know me. My name is William Stewart, and here for a few questions about the July 10th meeting with the Town Select Board. Bringing up a few questions where Jimmy Carroll congratulated Stuart highly about the job that he did getting all the information back to the town in such a hurry, but there was quite a few questions that were not asked at the time.
Oh, this wasn't a hurry, Mr. Stewart. This took many months to get this done. There was no hurry in this.
Well, as we talked, there was only one question brought up, and only one question answered at that meeting that you brought up. It was just the high cost of the $18 million that they threw out there as a price that would cost to build this bottling facility. Now, my first question is, is where is this facility being built? Is it in any proximity to Bennington?
No.
Do you know where it is?
It's in Florida.
It's in Florida? Okay, well, that's quite a ways away from the water that's being taken from Morgan Spring, for an example.
That information was provided just as one instance of what it might cost to build a large bottling plant to keep up with the market that you're trying to develop. It was not meant to say that that's what it's going to cost here, if, in fact, the Board decides to pursue it, but it gives people an idea of the range of costs that you're looking at. And you're looking at, as I said in several meetings before that, we're looking at millions of dollars to build and operate this facility. And if you're lucky to make 18 cents on a case of bottled water, you have to understand what the payback is to try to operate that facility, and what your market must be in order to sell that much water.
Well, the question being posed is that. That's in Florida. That's not in upstate Vermont, in any parts of the Northeast, where water is fresh and comes just about from everywhere. Florida's way down off the hill, and the cost in Florida, I'm sure, is a lot higher than where you don't have the water coming right out of the ground. I know the excuse is, you've got all this time to worry about it, but fall's coming fast, and your answer about what you're going to do with Morgan Springs coming up faster every day. Have you heard any questions about what's going to happen with the Morgan Spring and any of the turn of the water?
Unfortunately, we have not had any further discussions with our engineer or with the potential folks that we're working with that might bottle it. Unfortunately, we've been kind of consumed with several other issues that require our attention.
Well, have you looked at any part of the profit margins that you would make being from the part of Bennington that we have? We don't need an $18 million facility when the water flows out of the ground at 1.3 million gallons every 12 hours. So the thought to me is, why would we want to worry about something that's got so much water flow that we keep trying to push aside all the time? I know this was a great, you know, back in the day, I'm sure this was a great, you know, win for you and Crystal Rock, but in the end, when this five-year contract is over with, what's the proposed answer to what's going to happen at the end of five years? Are we going to take the water back over for ourselves, or are we going to continue to give it to the company that makes 13 millions of dollars a year selling our water for $80,000?
Well, I can't answer that question. That's speculation, but right now, the cost for us to create and provide that water is the cost of electricity to operate the pumps that remove it from the ground versus the income of some $80,000 to $85,000 a year. So right now, it looks like it's a pretty good gain for us, whether or not we want to, that is, the Select Board wants to invest the funds necessary to build a facility, whether it's a million-dollar facility or a $2 million facility. That's a sizable chunk of change, and then you have to operate the facility, employ people to operate it. You have to market. You're going up against the big guys and...
Well, if there's no return in it, then why are they building one in the first place? There must be some kind of super return on $18 million plant.
Because they are competing, this company is competing nationally with all the big boys, with Coca-Cola, Pepsi-Cola, and in order to maintain their market share, they've got to build their facilities where their market is being created. And so they are chasing the dollar, and that's, is Bennington, Vermont, the town of Bennington, going to build a facility and attempt to do that? Right now, I sit here and I would say, I wouldn't think we'd spend our money that...
Well, maybe we should start looking into the facts, that we need to look into a little bit deeper about the fact of building a water plant. We're doing something on a smaller scale that makes just as much water when we have all the water. It's liquid gold. They're making millions off of us making a very small profit margin, in my mind, when this town should be making more off the water. And I suggest in the five years later on, and when this contract is over, that we do not step into another 20-year contract to make the company more money than we ever imagined making for ourselves.
Mr. Stewart...
Appreciate your comments.
I share your frustration and what seemingly seems like, you know, we're getting a shaft or being...
Well, with a 20-year contract, that's a shaft.
I'm not done. Granted, you know, maybe it should be a shorter contract, but really, you know, and we, having owned businesses for about 20 years, you know, when it comes to investment, and, you know, in the best of all possible worlds, wouldn't it be great if we had a water bottling plant? But we've got to compete with Coca-Cola and Pepsi and other places that can dig deep into their collective pockets to achieve that, but we can't.
That's not the, well, what about the profit return in so much time?
Right now.
In five years, 10 years, 20 years?
Mr. Stewart, right now, they're pumping water out of the ground, and we're getting $85,000 a year for doing nothing.
No.
That's a pretty good deal.
No, they're aggravating and driving traffic and tractor-trailers down a residential neighborhood, disrupting the entire flow of all life on the end of the town.
Well, Mr. Stewart...
And that's the profit that we have, or the problem we have.
Mr. Stewart, you know that myself, Tom Jacobs, Stuart, and Don Campbell, we came over there and tried to address that, and I believe that we are working on ways to
Just hoping that you look forward into this.
But that has nothing to do with a water bottling plant.
Excuse me just a second. Tom, you asked me to remind you when we're on time. So we are now at 6:20, which is supposed to be the end of citizen's comment.
Right, well, I have one more statement to say here.
Go ahead, Bill, finish.
I am a ex-union carpenter. I build these facilities that you think that you know so much about, that is so expensive to build, okay? I have a lot of people in Albany that I've been, I was out of 291 local Albany union carpenter for 31 years. I have people, of all people around me, that know how to build these buildings. I built the buildings myself. I know what infrastructure goes inside of them. I know approximately what it takes. And if we all need to get together on a price, I could probably find a price from a company right out of Albany to build it for us or retrofit it with a lot less than $18 million.
Bill, thank you, you know, and I think what I'd like, you know, if you've got that time and energy, which you've obviously spent a lot of time and energy, don't stop. Get, you know, if you've got some folks that can share some ideas with the town, do it.
Absolutely.
Because that's a resource that we should examine. So I welcome your comments, and we'll look forward to hearing from you with maybe some ideas.
I just hope it goes forward. I hope you guys start thinking about more ahead, not just what's in front of us.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, thanks, Bill. Bill Knight?
I'm Bill Knight, and I'm still President of Apple Hill Homeowners Association, at least for a while.
Yeah, that's good.
I just want to say that we are still, the association, vehemently opposed to the Apple Hill, Chelsea and Apple Hill Solar Project, and no matter what you might have heard, we're not in any negotiation, nor have we come up with anything that we would want to negotiate in order to support that project. Excuse me. However, in the past, the solar people have approached me on occasions and asked what could they do to compensate us if we would support the project. And also, I know I've talked to members of the Board, and you've said to me, "What can we do to make it somewhat tenable?" I think's the word you used. In other words, that it doesn't feel like we're getting it run down our throat. And I just wanted to say that during the negotiation, I just wonder if, when you're going back and forth, if you see something that you know is totally going to be offensive to us, or that they're kind of going backwards on what they said, would you give us a little bit of a heads up that this is going to happen?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, because we'd like to have some input, because I know that we feel like that we've probably, it's been four years, and we've been in this, been affected more than just about anybody in town.
Any terms or conditions, and I know I'm speaking for the Board, and I think I can say this with a little bit of authority, any terms or conditions that we agreed upon would be made public in a totally transparent way, and then you would be able to weigh in on it. Is that accurate?
It is, but I'm not quite sure it's what Bill's asking.
Well, I guess I'm asking, I hear what you're saying, and maybe I'm asking for, I don't want to say preferential treatment, but I mean, if you see something, you know that we're totally against in this negotiation. And you know, there has been a very big trust issue with us and those solar people. So all of a sudden, they say, "Well, we're going to have to cut a few more trees than we thought, which is going to affect us in wind and noise, or maybe we may have to use your roads now," you know, just things like that, that these where-for's and maybe-if, and in conjunction with, and all this kind of things, that we just don't want to get caught up in that. We just like to have a heads up personally, I guess, let's say. Can you do that?
I think that's, I think that's, there's the delicate element of a negotiation, but I think if it's not moving, as long as it's, if it's a backsliding thing, I think we would have to say directly to the developer, "We need to air this with the community," and I think that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I don't ask, we're not asking to see figures or anything like that, or any money, or, just like I said, we just like to know if it's, maybe we can have some input if you think it's something that's totally going to go against what we think affects the welfare of our little community up there, or the safety.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you for that.
Libby Harris, please.
I know, to be streaming room. I sent the Select Board an email on Friday, and I didn't know if everybody got it, so I brought our copies for anyone who...
Sure, take one.
And I was hoping to give it to your secretary.
Sure, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you so much for being so considerate.
Thanks for taking the time to write this.
Lori, Laura Block?
I'll be very brief also. I'm here to reiterate that I hope the Select Board will vote in Executive Session later not to enter into negotiations with the solar company and still stay firm in supporting the town plan and the win that we had at the Public Service Board regarding Chelsea Solar. My understanding is that we have a pretty good chance of having our objections upheld, the objections of the Public Service Board upheld at the Supreme Court. I don't think that we're going to lose there if we take the case to the end. So I think pulling out and doing the bidding of ALCO is something I actually cannot even understand why you would do it. But I have said that a number of times at the Select Board. I appreciate your being willing to listen to me again. But I have here a more, I'm here to really ask, say something more specific. As a citizen and as a taxpayer of Bennington, I would really like to know that the Select Board in the future won't ever feel that you don't have enough money to defend us in legal action in similar kinds of cases. I know Select Board members that I've talked to, and you've said it in this meeting, public meetings, "Wow, we have these legal fees, it's expensive, we can't afford to keep going," which is, of course, exactly what the solar companies hope. They know they can spend us into the ground. So as I was thinking about this whole situation, it occurs to me that if you do decide, against what I would wish, to take this payment from, or any payment, from the solar company, that you put it into a legal defense fund, meant only for the Select Board to use for future cases like the one we are facing now in Chelsea and Apple Hill, where it's worth the town's effort, and the Town Board has made a decision to object on certain grounds to certain energy projects, and you want to fight it, but you feel you don't have enough money to do that. So having a legal defense fund of money separated out only for that purpose, I would feel really good about that as a citizen, and it would go a long way to allowing this Board or future Select Boards to be able to make a decision on whether or not to enter into legal disputes, legal fighting, based on the merits of the case and not just based on, "Oh, we don't have enough money." So I hope you'll consider that as you think about the next steps, and that's all I have to say. So thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Diana Leiser?
I'm Diana Leiser from Bennington. Just very briefly, I hope the Select Board realizes the importance of the decision you're considering tonight and its far-reaching effects. Your decision will affect not only Bennington and its future, but every town and city in Vermont. Our town has shown the way for other communities to affect their future regarding renewable energy siting. Let's not abandon them. Let's not negate the hard work our town has done. Let's make the right and moral decision, not only for ourselves and our town, but our fellow citizens. That's all.
Thank you, Diana. Joe Stronik?
Shonig, thank you. I want to thank you for the opportunity to address you, the members of Select Board this evening, and I promise to be brief. The issues regarding Chelsea and Apple Hill proposed solar project has been discussed long and thoroughly for some time now, and when, at the time that I wrote this, I was under the assumption that you were going to be voting tonight. So, that said, you're not voting tonight. We look forward to the next time. Equal time has been allotted to the out-of-state developers representing their proposals, with several members, several members of the Bennington community expressing their agreement and approval to that. In turn, there has been an overwhelmingly large group of citizens expressing their concerns specifically against these two projects, as well as the impact that your decision shall have on our beloved town and state. You have a very important decision to make this evening, or the next time, and I don't envy you. In closing, I would simply like to remind you that we are your constituents. The developers are not. We would like to believe that you will act in our... We would like to believe that you will act in our place and express the will of the people, and not the corporate self-interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Sorry about your name. Rory Price, are you here for the coalition?
This is the Saturday.
Okay. Go ahead, Rory.
So my name is Rory Price. I'm the coordinator of the Kitchen Cupboard Food Program here in Bennington. I'm just here to give you an update about Harvest for Kids. I came to a meeting a couple weeks ago to talk about it. So just to refresh your memory, there's a five-week gap in meal programming between the end of July and the beginning of the school year. So a bunch of community organizations have banded together to form Harvest for Kids, a group to provide supplemental nutritious foods to families with children during that five-week gap. Foods will be dispersed via the Kitchen Cupboard and Oak Hill Children's Center in Pownell. Our initial fundraising goal was $15,000 to account for serving an estimated 500 children, many of them multiple times. However, our projected total amount raised is looking like a little over $7,000. That's through individual donations, small grants, organization contributions, and team fundraising. We have some interested volunteers, and we're hoping that information about the program is reaching the individuals that need to hear about it most. And our first distribution is this Saturday in both locations. So I just wanted to give that update to you all.
Hopefully you have the media there at the distribution time, and maybe that'll help with the effort.
Are the pantries helping you?
Sorry?
Around the pantries? The food pantries?
So we are the Kitchen Cupboard, which is the food program for Bennington. There's a few more.
There's more than one, right?
Right. We've worked with Pownell Food Pantry some, but those are the only two food programs locally.
Aren't there several here in Bennington?
There are, right. But it's a, it can be hard to put another thing on their plate. So these were the two, two distribution sites that we have, one in Bennington and one in Pownell.
And one other thing that I've been wondering about, have you inquired with respect to Hannaford and Price Chopper? It's my understanding that on a fairly regular basis, they're throwing food away that is otherwise still usable.
Right. So both of those stores are involved in what's called a retail partner, or retail partnership, associate, something, through the Vermont Food Bank. So for instance, the Kitchen Cupboard has a partnership with Walmart and Aldi, and other local food programs have a partnership with Hannaford and Price Chopper. So that food is being utilized and not thrown away. Hopefully, that's the goal.
That's great. Thank you, Rory.
Rory, what's the best way to get an attention? Could you say that again?
So you can call us, or you can email me at ben@kitchencupboard@gmail.com, two N's in Ben.
And on Facebook too, Rory?
Sorry?
Are you on Facebook too?
Yep, and we do have a Facebook page for Harvest for Kids as well.
Great. Just wanted you to plug all those.
Sure, yeah. Thank you.
One final question. I know that this is done particularly in New York City and some of the larger metropolitan areas, that restaurant owners donate food at the end of the day to organizations like yourself. Any work on that end?
We've had a few that regularly donate, like Ramunto's, for instance. But yeah, it can be hard to...
Ramunto's, you said?
Yep. So it can be hard to kind of organize getting prepared food like that, and keeping it stored safely and distributed at a good time. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much, Rory.
Good evening, Mary. I too will be brief. I thought the question was answered, but in listening to the discussion in regards to the executive session, it's a little bit confusing. First of all, if you decide whatever you decide in the executive session, that is making a decision, it's technically is supposed to come before the public for a formal vote. Because even if you decide to go into negotiations, which you said you might bring back to the next meeting, that is a step you are taking, and that needs a formal vote, according to the Secretary of State's office. So how is that going to be handled? These people are here tonight, and we're going to stay for the whole meeting. We can stick out two or three hours if it takes that, in order to hear what you're coming back to say. So how does that, how is that going to be handled? Because that is a step you're taking.
Well, I suppose that it could be seen as an inconvenience for the people. We were trying to do it more as a convenience, rather than an inconvenience to everybody that was coming tonight, knowing that we all have a lot of questions for our legal counsel. So I think what we are committing to is not taking a vote on anything that would be then binding.
But this is not about an inconvenience or a convenience. This is about how to do a formal executive session, coming out of session, having a step, whether it's to come back to the next meeting, to tell folks you're going into negotiations, that is technically taking a step. And that would be taking a step behind closed doors, which you cannot do coming out of executive session.
Well, I'm sure, Rob, our legal counsel, will keep us on the straight and narrow on that path. And what we're trying to do here is to try and make it so that this process is more transparent, rather than less transparent, more accessible, rather than less accessible. But we do have to do some of it in the executive session.
And one last question. Who participates in the executive session?
The board and our legal counsel.
The whole board?
The board that's present.
Who's present?
Yeah. No, not Rob.
Were you?
Not Tom.
Yeah.
No, I won't be there. Yeah.
You know, historically, Mary, and I think it behooves everybody to know this, that whenever we've had an executive session, I can't say that we, that I recall that we've made a decision before we presented it to the public. We discussed it, haven't voted on it, and in the follow-up meetings, when it's discussed, it's presented before the public. So, you know, that's just, historically, that's not what happened, has happened.
So we can look to have you come to the next meeting, telling us you've decided something?
No. No. I think what will happen is we'll discuss the findings that we've made, and then open it up to discussion amongst ourselves and the public. Is that right? Does that sound too far-fetched?
I specifically heard someone say that you would come back to say that negotiations, you were either entering into negotiations or not. That is taking a step.
I don't know. I guess I'll ask Rob Wilmington about that tonight. And we, you know, we are going to be careful about the open meeting law, but we, it's a, right now, it's a legal issue, and we're taking the advice of our attorney.
We understand that, and the Secretary of State's office specifically said, because I said, is there any legal issue that would supersede what? And they said, when they go into executive session, and a decision is made, and that is either to proceed or not, then you need to come back out to, out of the executive session to vote on what you're doing. And if that means to proceed or not to proceed, the people have the right to know this evening.
Peter. Yeah. I'm confused. I want to have a question answered, because this is not clear. If you're not going to make a decision, or you are going to make a decision, how's making a decision? You know, are you not going to, you know, that's just, so I don't exactly understand what's supposed to proceed to. And it looks like...
If we were to take a vote, whether to not oppose, if we were to take a vote and say, all in favor of not opposing this, that would feel like a vote to me, and that would feel like something we would need to do in open session. If we were to ask our counsel for more information, or greater detail, or further nuance about some of the things that we're thinking about, I would consider that still in negotiation. There are a lot of reasons why we might not want to have the entire world know what we're talking about, for negotiation reasons. You know, you don't want to have everything open. It's not, not only is that true with, well, that's true with everybody, really, because we're trying to work things out. And if, for example, if, for example, we didn't feel we could win the suit, and we somehow telegraphed that, then that would weaken our position in court. So that's not something that we would care to do.
Am I allowed to answer you, or is...
Well...
Well, I will, because you're...
Yeah, go ahead, but let's wrap it up.
But it's good to me that, one, and sort of what I said before, you can go into executive session, you can of course talk to your attorneys, talk to yourself, and figure out what you want to do. But if, but the question seems to be a prior question. Do you want to enter into negotiations or not? And that needs to be a vote taken publicly, before you figure out what you're going to negotiate about.
And the hard part of this discussion is it appears as though you're already negotiating on many levels. Hopefully, we'll have that question answered.
Thank you, Mary. We're going to move into the Bennington Oral Health Coalition presentation.
Can I just interrupt you, Tom? I'm sorry, I know, Laura, I mean, we can come out of executive session tonight, and if you would like, we can make it, we can go back into session, and we can state what we've talked about, if you'd like. But it might just be, we're continuing to talk about it. Would that, would that be, would that satisfy you?
Well, if you're taking an action, so as Mary said, you've got an action.
I don't look at that as an action.
No.
There's no, you're talking to your lawyer. We're having a discussion.
That's it. We're talking to our lawyer, yeah, at this point. About options.
And heretofore, there have been no negotiations at all.
Okay. Okay. Can we move on?
Let's move on.
Don, can I just address this?
Yeah, thanks, Peter. Any clarity you can bring to it?
You might want to hit the mic over there.
Peter explained it quite well. I thought so, yeah.
As I understand what you said at the beginning of the meeting, you're going to go into executive session, discuss the issue, not make any decision, but you'll discuss it. Then at the next meeting, there'll be a presentation to the public saying, this is what we're thinking. At which point, the public, us, has an opportunity to address. And if we, if the public is in agreement with the direction you're going to say so, if the public is in complete disagreement, to say so, if the public thinks, well, there needs to be tweaked, then people can address that. And then after that, after that public input, then you're going to vote in public.
Yes.
That's accurate, right?
That's the way it works.
Well, I mean, here's the problem, that Jim is very clear that that's accurate. Don, you're not.
Well, I just think it's possible that we could get through the meeting tonight and not have all the information we need to even decide whether we should seek more information.
Yeah.
So I don't want to prejudge what this board is going to, what questions this board's going to have for our counsel.
No, and I understand that. And that's, quite frankly, I wouldn't want you to make a decision tonight and to come out and vote at nine o'clock tonight. I would, I much prefer the process that I understood you said in the beginning, that you'll talk about it, so that you're all understanding all the issues, and you all have your different positions. And then you'll have, again, the public will have an opportunity to have some input on the direction that you indicate you want to go in. So that would be at, I gather, it's the August 14th meeting? Is that the next meeting?
Yeah.
But I understand, you would talk to Rob Wilmington, who'll be here later tonight, and you need that. You need that input from him.
Right. And I'm not sure that it would be at the August 14th meeting, but it would be at some, you know, at the next meeting, that we could have whatever information we were looking for.
It'll be at a warned and notice meeting, where the public can have it.
That's right. Not a, not a special meeting that's difficult to find.
Right.
Thank you. I think we've got to move on, folks. I'd love to just, you know, have a further dialogue, but this is not being any more productive than I would hope. Before we move on, just quickly...
Thank you, Peter.
Mary brought up some good points. Are we all kind of at a point now when we're addressing Mary's points? You're basically meeting with your counsel in executive session, and you will be talking with him, and you will, at that point, decide what course to take. Is that...
That's right. We don't know what course we're going to take yet, but we're going to let Rob advise us on that.
That is the point, you're deciding the steps.
This is talking with the counsel, and no more, no less. I'm sorry.
So you absolutely won't be entering any conversation for the next meeting at Lawrence here.
With...
There will be no discussion of, well, we'd like to do this, what do you think about that? Nothing, right? Is that what you're saying, or not?
I'm not saying that. I...
Someone's saying it.
Well, I'm not saying it, because I can imagine...
I'm fairly confident I won't be.
We want more information.
Can't speak for the rest of the board.
Yeah.
So there will be no negotiations taking place between this board and the solar company? Or conversation? Or conversation? Because in order to do that, you would have to come out in public session and vote to do so. And if you haven't yet voted to do so, then you can't, because you can't take an action except if you go to session. That's right.
Right. But what we're going to do in an executive session tonight is just weigh out what has been offered, the ideas that have been offered. We make no decision. Any decision that we make or choose to make will be done in open session. But tonight is just going to be a discussion. Tonight is just going to be a discussion.
Don, doesn't seem like... He just said the option.
Are we going to discuss?
No, we're consulting our attorney tonight, and we're listening to him for what options he thinks are open to us. That's all.
But you just said we're not going to guarantee that no negotiations are going to enter into.
No, that wasn't the question. The question was about contact, and I could imagine that we might have a situation where we might need more information, we might not understand something about the revised proposal, there might be, you know, there might be things that...
That means you're entered into negotiations, so today, and that means you decided to negotiate.
That's, that's not true, Laura. It's not true. I think if there are clarifications that we need from the developers, I think it's appropriate for counsel to ask the developer for those, for those clarifications. It doesn't mean we're negotiating, it means we're attempting to clarify.
Have you decided by now, deciding?
Well, you know, I'm sorry, but that's...
Okay, I've heard, I've had enough of listening to this discussion. It's not productive. It's time to move on. We've got to, we've got an agenda here that is already very substantial. And I'd invite the Bennington Oral Health Coalition presentation to proceed. Mr. Jingo, would you like to introduce yourself and proceed?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Charlie Jingo. I'm a member of the Bennington Oral Health Coalition. We have several of us who are going to do very brief presentations for you this evening about several different facets. Back in November of 2016, I was invited by the Select Board to come to your meeting to talk about the issue of poverty here in Bennington. And I offered a perspective on many ways that poverty shows up here, and I urged you to not forget, I probably said, please include the issue of poverty and people who live in it in any of the work that comes in front of you. Also, in November, you asked me if I would come back periodically just to do some updates, or to present some different facets about poverty that are alive and well in the community. And one of the issues that I mentioned back in November was the deplorable health of, the oral health of a number of people, including children who live here. And that's why we're here this evening to talk about this. We're going to give you several brief presentations that kind of lay out what the state of oral health is in our town, and some things that we're doing to address it. Rory Price is going to be the first person presenting, and she's going to do a brief summary of what I'm calling the program infrastructure, some of the things that we've been working on in the community to address these issues. Sue Andrews will touch on some of the links between poverty and oral health. Grace Winslow is going to give you a peek behind the scenes of work that we've done at Bennington Elementary School. And Dr. Dick Dundas will touch on public health-related efforts that we might be able to use, we would hope successfully.
Thank you. Rory.
All right. As Charlie said, I'm Rory Price, the coordinator of the Bennington Oral Health Coalition. I'll just give a really quick background about the coalition so that you know where we're coming from, and then I'll give you a sense of what we've been doing in the community. So during the 2012 community visit process organized by the Vermont Council on Rural Development and the Select Board, poverty was one issue identified by the community as being essential to address. Within that poverty working group that formed, the abysmal state of oral health in Bennington was highlighted as an area that needed some serious attention, and an oral health subcommittee was formed, which eventually morphed into the Bennington Oral Health Coalition. So for the past two years, we have focused our public health interventions on behavior change, meaning that we're trying to get ahead of the onset of dental disease and tooth loss, especially in Bennington children. We're looking to prevent pain and suffering. We recognize that an infrastructure needs to be built, one that supports health and wellness of our community, and we've been doing our part to fulfill that vision. We've utilized dozens of volunteers to distribute over 7,000 oral hygiene kits in the community and to complete 200 oral health education presentations in daycares, preschools, elementary, middle, and high schools. While this work is valuable, and we have built many strong relationships, it's time, energy, and money intensive for little measurable success. So just for a broad view of the coalition, we have 20 coalition members and over 400 oral health champions, and hope to expand that list and to recruit and train more volunteers. We've created partnerships with Williams College, SVC, Bennington College, UVM, and MAU volunteers. We have been and will continue to work with the Vermont State Dental Society to educate the community, educate the community about community water fluoridation, and will still uphold it as a cornerstone of public health initiatives. We completed an 18-month daily tooth brushing initiative in Bennington Elementary that, if given the proper support, could potentially be spread throughout the SVSU. In the past year, we completed 90 educational presentations and will continue to do so while adding avenues to reach parents and adults through workplace wellness, parenting, and other community programs. We have plans to work with the SVSU Comprehensive Health and Wellness Group to highlight oral health in the SVSU curriculum. In 2015, the coalition was instrumental in launching the dental chair at the middle school, after a school-wide screening showed that 20% of the students there needed immediate care or further evaluation by a dentist. Kendra Strattan is the tooth tutor there now, working with connecting students to a dental home in addition to providing educational and clinical work, such as cleanings. This year, the coalition successfully advocated for the inclusion of a dental case manager, someone to split time between the middle school and the high school, working with parents and teachers to identify students in need of dental assistance. With Kendra's work, a more narrow group of students was identified this year as potentially needing oral health care, and a second screening was completed at the middle school with a smaller pool of students. There were, there were 53 students. 55% of them needed immediate care or further evaluation, and 40 of the 53 showed signs of gingivitis. We're currently working with the SVSU to hire a new dental case manager and to arrange a school-wide screening in the high school on August 24th and 25th, the results of which will serve as a starting point for the dental program at the high school. So that's just a really brief overview. That's not nearly everything that we've done, but I'll hand it over to Sue Andrews. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
I've got us on the clock. So I'm going to speak briefly about the connection between poverty and oral health disease. Basically, the burden of oral health disease is borne very disproportionately by people who are low-income, both kids and adults. It's very telling, I think, in a community forum to have, there must have been 15 or 20 people here from one of the sort of middle-class housing developments in town who could have stayed here to talk about the burden of health disease or the burden of oral health disease on low-income kids. But it's, I think this is an example of the fact that there's a disconnect in our community between those who have and those who do not. So I just thought it was a real good example of the issue that we are up against in trying to give voice to the problem among our low-income people. So there's a couple of points I wanted to make. One is that, and all of this is from several studies that are carried out at the state and federal level on a regular basis. I can give you the names of those surveys if you're interested. But basically, that Bennington-area residents of all ages receive fewer preventative dental health services than people in other parts of Vermont. Lots of reasons for this, but that's what it comes down to. Each of us is told by dental professionals that we should see a dentist twice a year every six months. The group that came closest to that in Bennington was that kids ages 6 to 18, of those, 63% of them actually got to see a dentist once in the preceding year. At the real low end of the spectrum, babies who are born are supposed to have their first dental visit by age one. In Bennington, only 11% of children are seen by a dentist before 18 months. The second point is that local children are experiencing worse dental health outcomes than other parts of the state by far. So in a study done by the Vermont Department of Health in 2014, Bennington Elementary School, Molly Stark School, and the Shaffsbury Elementary School were three of the worst performers of all schools surveyed throughout the state, and the survey included kindergartners and third graders. It looked at two things. It looked at history of dental disease and existing untreated dental disease. We led the state in both areas. Not good. Local residents have worse dental health outcomes than other residents in other parts of the state, so for adults as well. Waiting until oral health issues become problems and disease is expensive. In 2014, right here in Bennington, we had 60 kids who were treated at the hospital under anesthesia to have oral health problems rectified. The average cost for those procedures was almost $5,000 per event. Lot cheaper to treat things up front. And finally, local residents are not receiving the benefits of optimally fluoridated water. And you're going to hear from, hear about this from us time and time again. At this time, 55% of Vermonters drink optimally fluoridated water. In Bennington County, 0% of residents drink optimally fluoridated water. So I go back to my opening statement, which is that all of these things are just examples of why or how the people in poverty or people at the lower end of the economic spectrum bear the disproportionate burden. If we're ever going to go forward with economic development, improving employment opportunities, having downtown revitalization, we need to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to get on the ladder and to go forward and be part of this effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Grace Winslow. I worked with the Benell students in grades, last year it was grades two and three, this year it was grades three and four, so I followed those students for another year. I did approximately 10, I think 10 lessons, maybe it was nine, over the past 18 months with them. And we started this with a behavior and knowledge survey, and we did a midpoint knowledge and behavior survey, and we did an endpoint knowledge and behavior survey, which had some interesting and somewhat disappointing results. I've been, I saw them every other month. So when we started, the, the survey that was created was implemented by the teacher, so the teachers gave it to the kids. So there may be some oddities in the endpoint of the results because it was implemented by someone besides me. Because, for instance, a child, if the teacher says to you, how many times a day do you brush your teeth? They know they're supposed to brush twice a day, so they're going to write down twice a day. If I say to them, how many times do you really brush your teeth? Not how many times you should brush your teeth, but how many times do you really brush your teeth? They're more likely to be a little more introspective and think about that in terms of themselves. So just that you have an idea of how weird these results were. Grades two, that advanced to grades three, had a 22% increase over the 18 months in brushing three times a day or more. Yay! Then, grades three, that turned into grades four, had a 10% decrease in brushing three times a day or more. Grades two and three, 30% more children read the nutrition labels on the packaging that they had. And grades three, turning into grade four, had 20% increase in students who never look at nutrition packaging, nutrition labels. So we have that kind of weird result, and I don't know how to explain it. There is an interesting thing that was in the paper when we were discussing the heroin problem in Brattleboro a couple of weeks ago, where the doctor said, we're specifically not going to name this heroin, this drug, because we're afraid that people will go out and buy it. And my, my concern is that if I come in once every two months and I say to them, you should always floss, because if you don't, you're going to get cavities, I wonder how much of that is, you know, I'm risk-taking and I'm going to then not floss because somebody told me. So I thought that was an interesting, perhaps an interesting explanation. I, I want to make a couple of points based on some of the things that the kids told me. We, in December, did an interview with them where we said, where are you right now in terms of brushing and flossing? Where would you like to be? And why aren't you in that place? And one child said to me, we can't, my mother says that we can't afford toothpaste. And because we can't afford toothpaste, and this was in December, and because Christmas is coming up, it doesn't look like we're going to get toothpaste anytime soon, I thought, holy mackerel, you know, I've been giving them toothbrushes to take home, but I never thought, you need something to brush with. Now, they can brush without the fluoridated toothpaste, but they've been learning all their lives, put the fluoridated toothpaste on your brush and brush your teeth twice a day. If they don't have the fluoridated toothpaste, they don't think, maybe I should brush anyway. And in fact, they would be better off if they had the fluoridated toothpaste. So I so, I understand that, but it is sort of shocking, isn't it, to think, I can't afford, to think, what if I couldn't afford toothpaste? What if I was up against that kind of, of a problem? The second thing that sort of surprised me was when we were taking this final survey, one of the kids, when we came to the question about how much candy do you eat, you know, once a day, once a week, once a month, et cetera, they started answering that, and then one of the girls said, oh, but we have a teacher who rewards us with candy. And so they all had to change their answers because they suddenly realized that this candy that they weren't getting at home was coming from the school. So they weren't, they weren't thinking about that piece. So a couple of points I'd really like to make. Dental health really needs to be considered an important part of health. Physical health is taken care of. We have for elementary school children, recess and/or gym most days, and it takes up a large chunk of the day. Tooth brushing takes two minutes, maybe three minutes if you count the transportation time, you know, running back and forth. We, if we don't allow kids to brush their teeth at school, I don't know what kind of message that sends them, except, you know, obviously, your teeth aren't as important as the rest of your body, your cardiac health, your muscles and all of that. And the tooth brushing was the most consistent in the classrooms. They had the teachers who were most enthusiastic, who talked about it after I wasn't there or when I wasn't there, and who made brushing an everyday routine, and they didn't make a big deal out of it. That was where we found the best impact with the kids in terms of their survey results and in terms of how often they brushed their teeth, because we did track how often they brushed their teeth also. I doubt very much that the kids will remember everything that I taught them, you know, how fluoride becomes, protects the teeth and, you know, what parts of the teeth are and all of that, the little details. But I hope that they do come away with, at least, brush your teeth, know that fluoride is good for you, go see the dentist every year or more frequently. But I do want to say that if our, if our teachers, and I have heard this more than once from more than that one little girl, if our teachers are serving food as a reward or punishment in school, that's a shame. That should not ever happen, because that not only counteracts the advice that they get from dentists, but I, I work for Head Start also, and I know that these parents are trying their very best, and they will say no to their kids. They want to say no to their kids sometimes, or yes to their kids sometimes, but they'll say no to their kids a lot about candy and sweets. If the teachers are handing it out in the school, they're undermining the parents. They're not just undermining me, they're undermining parents, and that's not a message we want to have. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to say also, thank you to the Idea Fund, and thank you to the Benell staff and the kids. Thanks.
Thanks, Grace. Last but not least, Doctor.
Yes, last but not least.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks for hearing us tonight. I wanted to speak about community water fluoridation. So let me phrase it in this way. For many reasons, the Select Board is and should be concerned about the town's public health. I think it's one of your jobs. The Bennington Oral Health Coalition is looking for you, looking to you for leadership and help. Bennington has about the worst oral hygiene in the state. That's a fact. No one disputes it. We have an epidemic of tooth decay that goes on and on fueled by anti-fluoridationists and their erroneous beliefs and biases. We can do something about this epidemic, but we've failed time and again. Again, we need your leadership and we need your help. We want to press forward, but without these things, we will likely fail again. So I wanted you to look at this pyramid before you on your handouts. It's, does everybody have it?
Yes, me have.
It's called the Health Impact Pyramid, and it's a way of looking at public health. Look at the top of the pyramid, and you'll see Counseling and Education. Look at the arrows on either side, and you see that counseling and education requires increased individual effort. That means increased personnel, increased time, and increased money. But look at the other arrow, it gives very little in the way of population impact. Now look further down at the base of the period to the next, to the last level. I think this is the important level for the Select Board. I'd like to, it's hard to read the words. I can barely read them myself, but I wanted to change them just a bit by, and rephrase it to say that, at this level, we're looking to develop the town's infrastructure to make a citizen's choice a healthy choice. Does that ring a bell? Does that make sense to you? We want to change our infrastructure so that a person making a decision will make a healthy decision. And at this level, there's much less individual effort, but much more population impact. Let me give you an example. Think of the traffic light at the four corners. A citizen wants to make a left turn there. He chooses to get in the left lane, wait for the green arrow, and he's, he goes, and he's likely to get through safely. If we didn't have that light system, we would likely have accidents, injuries, and perhaps even deaths. So an infrastructure system can improve the public's health. It's possible. So getting back to the rotting teeth issue, the town government could do something, and it should be working at the base of the pyramid. In the past two years, we've done a large number of interventions in our school systems and other public venues. Many hours, many frustrations, many half-hearted, well, not half-hearted on our attempts, but many things that we expected from somebody else that didn't happen. But in spite of our efforts, not enough impact from our point of view was made on our population. So we need an intervention that would help everyone, but particularly our residents who have socioeconomic disadvantages. Who do you think is most likely to wind up with cavities and dental infections and extractions? It's the people living at the lower end of the socioeconomic scale. About 30% of our kids have, are living in poverty. 30%. Reeducating them and their parents has not worked in the past and is not going to work in the future. Frankly, we cannot reach these parents. And even though we've tried for two years, we have, we cannot reach these patients, these parents. The parents have important worries other than good teeth, such as getting food on the table or paying the rent or getting their child educated. So oral health is kind of at the lower end of the scale as far as survival. And if we could, if we could reach these parents, it would be terribly labor-intensive and time-consuming and expensive. So we know, we, the Bennington Oral Health Coalition, know of an intervention that could reduce cavities by 30%. That would be a huge benefit to our town. That intervention is community water fluoridation. All the science supports the fact that it's safe and effective. The benefits far outweigh the risks. It's used by the majority of Americans. 211 million Americans get fluoridated water through their municipal water systems. 211 million, that's more than two-thirds. Fluoridated water has a history of 70 years being in water systems. It's very economical compared to the cost of dental care. It's proven. There should be no debate. So in summary, we are asking you to take on this issue. We're asking you to share our vision for better public health.
Thanks. Thank you, Doctor.
And in our final 30 seconds, trying to keep time here, thanks to everybody for presenting. I think there's one other piece that we would ask. And one of the things that we realize is that people don't always listen to facts and don't listen to science.
We've been down that road.
We, yes. And so one of the things that I think we as a community, and we look to our political leaders, Select Board members, School Board members, really to talk about, and you've done some of this, and we urge you to do it in this context also, is to talk about the values and the aspirations that we have as a community, as friends, as neighbors, as citizens. Because if we really want to get the community as a whole to do something positive about the oral health of everyone who lives here, if we really want to get total and lasting and unwavering support, we can't just argue that the facts are on our side, that science is on our side. We need to inspire the community, and this is something that we also turn to you for, to inspire the community toward a vision that all of us can and do really care about. And I hope that it's something as simple as, a child's life is better with teeth. As simple as that. That we all care about that. What can we do about it? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have some remarks.
Okay.
And I'll be brief.
Yep. I'm gonna ask the entire board if they might want to.
Okay. When I had my food cart on Main Street, there was a really nice kid who used to come by. Barely 18 years old, I don't think he was even 18 years old. He used to always order a Philly cheese steak, and he would get a sausage and peppers for his mother. But that kid didn't have a tooth in his head, not one. And I remember looking at him, he's such a nice kid, you know, and just thinking, and it just stays in my mind that, you know, your dental health is your destiny. People judge you. Employers judge you on that, and it really comes down to success. That's what we're talking about, the success of our community and the success of our citizens.
It really, the economic impact is gigantic, and you just stated it very well, just talking about that one individual. If you don't have any teeth, or you are missing teeth, or you've got gingiva, whatever, whatever you've got, that has an, that has an economic impact on you, on your family, and on the community.
Chad?
I just want to say thank you. I know there's a direct correlation between, you know, students' health, oral health, and how they, how they learn in school. I see it on a daily basis with my students in some of the schools that you've said that are underperforming, or also underperforming on state tests and their maps tests. So thank you, and continue to work, and I'll do what I can to support you guys.
Thank you, Chad.
Tom?
Yeah, similarly, thank you all, Rory. I wasn't quite sure what, I probably should know what oral health champions are, but there are 400 of them out there, and it sounds like it must be a good thing. I'd love to talk to you more about that at some point. But Charlie, you know, this, this thing about talking about values is so hard. Here we sit on this pedantic board, plugging away, trying to make very nuts and bolts decisions. And what we'd really like to be doing is pushing out values, or not pushing out, but being part of sort of values conversations and values decisions in our community. And it's, it's really hard. It's really frustrating, and I appreciate more than anything, you know, you bringing up the fact that we need to lead with that, and let's see where that takes us.
Thank you.
I had a quick question on the map here, on the pyramid. Doc, I don't know if you wrote this or not, you're filling the stereotype for handwriting for doctors.
He does have bad handwriting.
What's the last word over, under changing the content or context? Adding some, is that, last word?
To bread, right?
Is it to bread? Is that, last word's bread?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I just couldn't read what it was. Sorry.
Gene?
Thank you.
Gene?
I was lucky enough to grow up with fluoridated water in New Jersey, and I have great teeth, I think, because of it, and maybe a little bit of genetics. But I think those of us that have teeth and have access to and are able to go to the dentist with or without dental insurance, I think we forget, and I think we take it for granted, and I think it's fabulous that you're keeping it in front of us. And it's a reminder that not everyone is as fortunate as I am. And I really, I really appreciate that, and I need a constant reminder of that. It's just, I've always had great teeth, I don't even think about it. So I really appreciate your, all your hard work, you guys have done. I could not believe the amount of things that you have done. I don't have kids in the school system anymore, so I had no idea of the amount of work that that has gone into what you're doing. And I really hope it has an effect and we can make some progress, because yeah, teeth are really great.
Thank you.
You know, it also comes down to simple math. We talk about economic development. When you have 60 children going to the OR at a cost of $5,000 apiece, you know, that's a lot of money. It's $300,000, you know? That's a waste of time, resources, and effort. And we talk about how we deal with the cost of healthcare and all those things. Well, this also has a direct impact on that. And folks have got to start realizing that they're part of the problem, we're part of the problem, and until we become part of the solution, we're just gonna be, I have a way to say something down the tube with our resources. So it's time that we take a deeper and deeper dive to make things happen, because the interventions which you talked about, it was well-skilled and presented, but as you suggest, it's really the, that tip of that iceberg, the tip of that triangle. And until the community takes upon itself to really deal with it, then we're just gonna be moving the chairs on that Titanic, and we're gonna hit that iceberg. Again, thanks for your presentation.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I'm sorry? We haven't gotten to, on this particular one? Yeah. Oh, yeah, sure, go ahead. Mike, you can, you've got the floor.
Thank you. I applaud the group for the effort, but they never tell you the good news. The good news is Arlington has opened up a dental clinic by Bernie Sanders. So everybody from Bennington that can't see one of the local dentists because they don't want to take Medicaid, or work out payment plans for the poor, can go up to Arlington. It's called the Baton Hill Medical Center, I believe.
Baton Hill Valley Health Center.
Baton Hill Valley Health Center. Not one of these people, I don't think, mentioned that. And about fluoride, if you're gonna give these people all this time to talk about the positives of fluoride, and make you people all kind of feel guilty that, you know, we didn't vote for it, I'm part of the anti-fluoride group, and I'd like an agenda time so we can tell you why we don't want it, and bring you some of the good news that's happening in our area. And also, we need to get the dentists in this community to start serving the poor and setting up some pay-scale type situations.
I think, you know, you've got part of the information relative to Arlington, but I can tell you that I understand the SVMC is going to be starting a dental clinic. That's gonna be an access open to the community. I'm not sure when that's coming online, but that is also going to be a significant resource. I think our dental community has done an admirable job with limited resources.
The also, the other thing is the paranoia about cavities. I'd rather our groups get centered on the paranoid about drugs. Three, four months ago, I knew a young girl, and she overdosed. Two weeks ago, I know another young girl, she overdosed, and they brought her back. The girl is, this girl that I know is 23 years old, she's absolutely gorgeous, got picked to be a model at something. She went through the radiology situation, uh, school thing there, she passed, she didn't finish it, but she was passing for flying colors. To me, you really want to worry about our young people. It isn't a tooth cavity that's gonna kill them, it's the drugs. We don't have a Boys and Girls Club here in this town, we have virtually nothing for the youth other than schools. And if you want to really start picking up what this community needs, is get that YMCA and find some money, put it in the budget, and dump some money into a Boys and Girls Club for this community. They can talk about cavities, they can talk about drugs, they can talk about where the future of their children are gonna go. So I applaud these people, I think their, their effort is great, but to me, there's bigger issues in this community. Jobs so people aren't poor, lowering taxes, not raising them, and making our communities something that people want to come to, not move away from. So I would like an agenda item set up for the anti-fluoride group, if you would allow that at some point.
Expect that's in the plan, that is in the, in the planning stage. We're probably gonna hear from our committee as well, aren't we?
Yeah, they've just submitted the report, so I suspect we'll have them in some time.
The, the local committee has also submitted, and I haven't even seen the report, it's supposed to come, I think Stuart has it in his office for now, so that'll probably be another part of our discussion going forward.
The other thing, the Baton Hill people up there might want to come down and give a presentation to the Select Board about what they do offer, not only for dental, but for medical. It's a, it's a fantastic thing, and Bernie Sanders is the one that, I believe, gave the money and started it all up. So I thank you.
Thank you. We, the next item on the agenda is the plantation lot sale proposal. Stu, maybe you could give us some background of where we're at.
As, as you know, the Board approved us doing a sealed bid process to the abutting property owners some time ago. The condition of the bid was that the minimum bid had to match the assessed value, which at the time was $76,600. We received two bids. The high bid was submitted by Rose Morrison, who was here tonight, and Rose, you may want to move to the microphone. At $26,600, which is, I'm sorry, 26,400.
26,400.
26,400, I'm sorry. Following that, I asked our assessor to take a quick look at the site now that it was cleared, because we did substantial logging operation on that site. He came back with an estimated value, and this is not a full reappraised value, but an estimated value of $50,000. So the high bid is still below what even an estimated value of a reassessment would be. But in talking with Rose, she asked that this bid be considered, she wanted to address the Board, since she had participated in the open bid process. And so at this point, I would turn it to Rose, if you folks are willing to listen to her presentation.
And I'll make it fairly quick, but first, I kind of made myself some notes, so I don't get nervous and forget, but, so I'm Rose Morrison. I've lived on the property that abuts this 44 acres.
Hey, Rose, could you just maybe get a little closer to the mic?
How's that?
Thank you, great.
Is that better?
That's great.
Okay. So I've lived there for about 25 years, raised my children there, and this situation really came to me, I didn't come to it. Having the land cleared was a decision from the town, and really, I wish I had known more about it before it all kind of happened. But that being said, I just wanted to bring up a few points that, about the project itself and how it's affected my home and my property. For one, because this is a large piece of property, my home, literally out my back door is probably 50 to 100 feet before the property border, and having it cleared, the water levels have completely changed. I, I understand we've had high numbers of water this year, but my basement is flooded completely. I wanted to bring up some things that may not be important to other people that are to me. I had a large population of owls behind there, they have obviously had to relocate to who knows where. The field, the crop field right now is currently a corn field that is part of my property, and also another abutters property that we share is used for crops. The damage that has been done to that field has severely affected the crops in that field this year. The corn in some of the areas are not, it's just not growing, so it has affected that, and I wanted to make sure I brought that up, because it, it really does make a difference. Things like that do make a difference. One last thing I want to bring up about the project itself that I wanted to make sure that I brought it up publicly, was that currently, I have submitted some photos, and I have lots, lots more. I've walked the whole 44 acres, but the slash, which is the debris that's left over after a logging operation, was not removed properly, ethically. Ethically, it's supposed to be 50 feet from borders, property lines. Currently, it's on the line, if not on my property and other abutters properties. And that being said, this was pine and Norwegian spruce that was planted on this land, and, you know, you look at it Google Maps, it's this glorious forest, it's not there anymore. But what is there is a very, very big mess of pine and Norwegian spruce, which my fear is, the end of August, we have no, we have no rain, we have hot weather, it's dry, one lightning strike, that place, it's gonna, it's, it's, it could truly be a forest fire hazard. And because my home is so close to this piece of property, my home is located out, quite a distance out away from the main road, it's probably a quarter of a mile, my driveway, and I do fear that. I fear that because of the slash not being picked up properly, that this could affect my home in that way. All this being said, clearly, I have an investment in this piece of property, because I've been there, and I want to protect the privacy of it, I want to protect the non-development of it. I grew up in a family that values land and values what it means to be somebody that lives in Vermont and have what we have and what we are fortunate to have. I have come up with a win-win proposal for the town of Bennington. I have an amendment to my bid. Whether you accept my amendment or not, that is totally up to the Select Board, but I will present it to you, and you can add it too. My, my win-win situation is, the town will get the money from the sale. They will also yearly be getting property taxes from me to pay for this property. Stu and I have had conversations about other ideas for this piece of property. I am willing to also donate access to the property for the CDC, but not just them, but also the Science Department at the Mount Anthony Union High School, to allow them to come in and study. Science Department, rocks and minerals, there's just, to have an outdoor classroom, to have it for the students, I'm willing to do this, I'm willing to make an agreement and have this happen. My biggest fear is that, for me, my win on this is the privacy, and is knowing that I am not going to have to go through the situation again with the open bids, with bids, and not knowing if I'm gonna end up at the next Apple Hill. I don't want a solar company behind me. So, so I guess what I put out to you is, I'm asking you to honor my bid.
Okay, we'll have a discussion right now. Go ahead.
Thank you for coming in, and I apologize for not doing this at the beginning to my Board members, but I should have recused myself from the very beginning, and I'm recusing myself now. Rose and I have had substantial conversations about conserving her land with the Land Trust, and we had substantial conversations about the difference in value between assessed value and conserve value, which are, which are two very different values, and so I have to recuse myself from any further conversation. And so I have to recuse myself from any further conversation.
As you recuse yourself, the distinction between the two, you can at least share that.
Well, an assessed value would be the full fair market value as, as it's sort of looked at by an assessor. And that would include, in this case, a house right or, or some ability to develop, if, if she was in fact, to put a conservation easement on it. The conserve value would be significantly less, because there'd be no development potential on it. And so that, those values are typically in the, you know, five or 600 bucks an acre value. So, so I think there's a distinction in her proposal between, uh, between a conserve property and between an assessed value. So, but other than that, I think.
Thanks, that's helpful info. Members, uh, go ahead.
Could I say one more thing?
Yeah, please.
You know, in my, in my bid that I presented to the town, and I have a copy of it with the little amendment, which is me writing, I would also, I, I also would like to invite the select board members, not open to the public, but the select board members, I would like you, to invite you to my home, so you can see for yourselves what it visually looks like. For, so you can see how close it is to my home, and it's truly been an arm to, to my property and to my home.
Thank you. Chad?
Uh, I appreciate you coming, you know, and discussing the concerns that you have and, you know, bringing it to our attention.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions?
Um, I'm assuming you, Rose was the only?
She's the high bidder.
The high bidder, there were other bidders.
There were two bidders.
Okay. But they were obviously less than the, than the 26,400.
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. That's the only question I had.
Carson?
Uh, before we move forward on kind of accepting bids or not accepting bids or moving forward at all, accountability for the quote-unquote "mess" on the property, is there some responsibility on behalf of the company that logged it? Was it done properly? It sounds like it wasn't. I haven't seen it, but I just.
More than welcome.
Do we agree, do we disagree, is there a fact in that? Do we need to have it looked at? I have no clue.
I don't know the logistics of a contract with the logging company, so I don't know. I just know that I do have, I have looked up what the proper etiquette is for a logging company, or for a logging operation, or, and, um, slash is supposed to be 50 feet from a property lines.
Okay, the question wasn't, I wasn't, I contacted you, but more towards, Stuart, I mean, I guess.
Yeah, I, I mean, I do have some concerns after, after viewing the photographs that Rose provided to us, that, regardless of the outcome of this meeting, I think that we owe it to her to, to go back into the site and do some things with the slash. Now, I'm told by a forester that if you're talking about reforestation of the, of the land, you're going to want to leave some of that slash in and around the site, because that, that helps to stabilize the soil, it helps to add nutrients to the soil. Donald, you're nodding your head.
Keeps the deer away.
Yeah. And, and so, um, I, I think we should do something regardless of the outcome here to, to, to make her view of the land behind her a little more attractive.
Can we reach out to the CDC and Dave Dents about, not possible, helping out with cleanup with their program?
Uh, we've reached out to David Dents and, and the CDC about, should the board decide not to do, not to accept this bid, to work with us, to, to create the educational opportunity that Rose is also offering us, should we accept her bid, to, to actually study the land management, to study the impacts of deforestation through a logging operation on the, on the habitat, the wildlife habitat, on the, on the groundwater movement. So, and, and Dave's initial reaction is he would love to be able to do that in either case.
Um, yes. As far as, uh, to Donald's point, if we were, if this land were to be dedicated, to be conserved, I'm using the right language, Donald, would that be in perpetuity?
Oh, is this appropriate for me to talk about?
No, no, because he's.
No, I'm asking informationally.
No, 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 he's already, he's given.
I think I recused at this point.
Yeah, okay, don't, hey, please, you're at the border. I can respond to that. You can have an easement, there is a term or perpetuity. So it's really by agreement of the landowner that gives the easement.
Mrs. Morrison, would you be willing to put that in perpetuity? Because otherwise, here's, here's, here's a quandary that I have. The assessed value is $50,000. And the purchase price that the town has offered you is $26,000, that's half of the value. Now, to my mind, we ought to open up, uh, that to the public to bid on it. I think that's fair and right. However, if you were to put this into conservancy in perpetuity, that's a horse of a different color.
I'm not necessarily completely clear of what perpetuity is.
Forever.
Forever.
Runs with the law.
Forever.
Okay. That actually, I would, I would absolutely be willing to discuss that, because I'm not sure how. I'm not sure if the property itself is, um, I'm not really sure about the logistics of it. So I would absolutely be willing to discuss this.
I'm not sure what you mean, you mean that it's developed?
Well, I'm not sure about how conservation easements necessarily work, I guess is what I'm saying. So I, I think that's the only answer I can say, I'm just not clear about that.
Well, I think she needs to ask some questions.
So let, me just follow up with a couple of things. One, apologize for the process, because we, we dropped the ball. This should have been a public sale opportunity, not just reserved to the adjacent property owners. And I think that was an innocent and understandable situation. We didn't know there was a, a right-of-way across, and we learned that after the bid process was started. So for that, I apologize for the board, because we did approve that sale. At this point, as it is right now, we have, based on the sale process, only two bids. They do not rise to the level of the appraisal. And, and my feeling is we should not be just giving land away. We should get as close to the appraised value and given the opportunity to the general public to arrive at that. The second part of it is, you know, we got a pretty good cash return on this, but if we created a bigger mess than, than we should have, then we have an obligation to the neighbors to clean that up, notwithstanding if the neighbor ends up with the property, we should clean that up. If I were to take a vote tonight, I would not accept the bid, but go to another, more open process to give anyone else an opportunity to bid on it, based upon its present situation, and accept the offers. And until then, it basically continues to be in our, our portfolio.
Can I speak on your agenda?
If I could just respond, as you know, in my memorandum, Tom, I, I do recommend that, if in fact the board does not decide to, to sell the property to Rose Morrison, I would recommend that the town hold on to the property, simply because it is either prime ag or secondary ag soils, interspersed with ledge, as you move to the east of the property, ledge outcroppings become more prevalent and it drops dramatically to the east. So if you, if you look at the, the development potential of the land, you're talking about potentially one home. The right-of-way access or the easement or the land access is only 24 feet wide. So you're, you're limited to one home there. And, and I would, I would think that rather than, uh, put the adjoining property owner, the one, the one who lives there now and has lived there for a long time, in a situation where now there is someone living up behind her or behind, uh, folks who live to the east, I would think the town ought to hold on to the land. We ought to move, uh.
Clean it up?
To, well, to clean up what is appropriate to clean up. If, if not all of the slash should be removed, then I would obviously not recommend we do that. But do what we need to do to return some sense of aesthetic value to Ms. Morrison's backyard and work with the CDC to use it as an educational opportunity. I would not recommend going out to a public bid and just, just to see if we can get close to the $50,000 or $70,000. Ms. Morrison and the other bidder were buying the land to keep it open and conserve it. And, and I think if.
We can offer the best of both worlds, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, that, that would be, I think that would be the best way to do it. We hold on to it if we don't accept the bid. And that way, the goal of everyone involved around this property is to keep it open and, uh, available for wildlife and other things, so.
Chad? Chad, you heard my comments, Stuart's?
Uh, I completely agree with Stuart's recommendation. I think if we're not going to accept tonight's bid, that it should remain, you know, it doesn't need to go out to an open bid.
Shane?
I was thinking the exact same thing. I didn't know if it was possible at this point, but.
Yes, it is.
It is.
Carson?
Hold on to it?
Before you vote, I speak, please. I don't really need to have a speak, but I got some good news for you. I can speak on your agenda, you can sit in.
Go ahead.
I like what you're saying, keep it for perpetuity, so this lady's protected and all of us are protected. But why not throw this lady a little bit of a nugget and allow her to maybe lease the land she needs around her property if she wants to do things with farming or goats or whatever you said? So it protects her, so she could pay the town so much a year, for how many acres do you think you'd need? Five, six, seven?
I think this is for another day. We're really talking.
No, but I mean, I'm just throwing out as an idea, before you vote, just to not let her lease some of it. We get some money and it protects her.
I don't think a lease discussion is warranted tonight. I think we have to decide whether or not we're going to accept that offer. And, um, if, at this particular point in time, we had a formal motion to accept the sale process, is there a formal motion to not accept the offer?
Some of.
Do we have to agree in the positive?
I'm sorry.
We have, I'm new to these rules, but do we have to, can we have a motion in the negative form? Does it have to be a positive?
Well, not to accept.
Not to accept.
Not to accept, yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay.
Or we could vote no to accept.
Yeah, you can.
I'm so confused.
Please, go ahead, but we're in discussion, do we have a second? I just want to make sure.
When it came to the conversation that Stu and I had about the CDC and about the access to, for the children, you know, for the children, for the students, um, you know, we do live in a community that now all of our children are going to be going to college, that a trade is a big, a very important thing for their future. So with our conversations with Stu, I, I did let him know that no matter how this turned out, I, I would absolutely support something like that and would love to be part of it in some way. So I think that that's a wonderful idea.
All I can tell you is you're very thoughtful and we appreciate your considerations too.
I just want to say one thing.
Go ahead, Chad.
I, you know, as I said earlier, the assessed value by the town would be $50,000. However, going to what Donald said with respect to it, making this a conservation plot, for lack of a better phrase, it effectively halves the value, which makes it a fair value. So on, on that, in that context, I would vote to accept your bid tonight.
Okay, we have a pending motion. I think I have a second, do I have a second?
You have a second.
Okay. Further discussion, all in favor at this point of rejecting the open bid, signify by aye.
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 Okay, we have four in favor. Opposed, one. And one recusal. Thank you very much, and I expect you're probably going to work with Stuart in the context of, of the process, and we wish, wish you well. Thank you for your combination.
All right, thank you.
And the potential cleanup.
Yes, that's.
Yeah, let's not.
Yeah, yeah. Gee, we wouldn't be doing our job if we didn't have a solar proposal, Encore redevelopment proposal for the farm, former landfill site.
I'll just, I'll kick it off, Jesse, are you here? Jesse's here to, from Encore, so.
Okay.
I'm hoping this is very, very brief, because we're not asking for any decisions tonight. We're not asking to accept a specific proposal or to negotiate a price or terms. The only reason we're here now, have Jesse answer questions if there's any, is to determine whether or not the select board would authorize the staff to begin to discuss whether or not we can come to a, you know, something that we can recommend to the board for a lease of this property for a solar project. They did, the Encore Renewable folks did give you some idea about what the deal might look like, but we're far from anywhere, we're far from close to being able to recommend any particular proposal or deal. And because we are running late on time today, really, all we're wondering from you folks is, does it make sense for the staff to discuss the possibility of a solar project on the landfill site? If you guys don't want to have one there, tell us, we're done, we'll, we'll pack up and we won't have any more discussions. But since it has been identified in the past, and since we had a deal in the past for the landfill, our expectation was that you folks would want us to reengage in discussions regarding the landfill.
Is Dan accurate in his conclusion? Without saying more, without going into detail? Because I don't think you have to say more than we're interested and willing. Encore did a nice job in their presentation in the, in the packet, but I can tell you, as, as well and as honorable as Encore has been in the, in the area, I'm not comfortable in just saying, sure, let Encore give us a proposal. I want that to be available to any other entity that might feel that they would want to make a proposal to our community.
So what you're saying is that you don't want to enter into negotiation with Encore, you want to put it out to, as a proposal?
That's my feeling, I mean, now, it's, it's up to the board, you know. I, I just, there may be other options out there, and I don't want this board to just look at just one if there are other options. Maybe there aren't. But Encore does come with a very good track record, which is obvious. But I'm just not comfortable in just saying, we're, we're, we'll listen to a proposal from Encore and no one else. This is a type of thing that should, does justify an RFP, uh, to make sure that we're comfortable with what is, what's out there. Again, as I qualified, maybe there isn't anything out there.
Do you mean a different kind of project or a different?
No, the process, the project is the project.
Okay, okay, I wasn't sure what you meant.
Somebody other than Encore may be coming into the picture.
I don't know, I mean, they, no one has, I guess.
We haven't even offered.
That sounds like there might be two answers for you here, Dan. And I think the first answer is that we probably could agree that we would like to see that as a solar site. I don't know if we need to vote on that, but it feels to me like we've identified it as probably our biggest and best solar site in town and one that we would like to see maximized, you know, for everybody's benefit. I think the second question is, do we just listen to a proposal or do we put out some kind of a request for proposals from different solar developers and ask our town staff to do that, since it's town, since it's basically town-controlled property?
You've said it much better than I did.
So I'll, I'll wait your decision.
No, it's no question of can you put up, are you going to put on RFP for it? That's a, can you do that first and then we'll hear from Encore?
Excuse me?
Sounds like we're just looking for a request for an RFP to go out. Is that what it boils down to?
I guess I would say we're not prepared to do an RFP, if that's what you want to do. We can certainly discuss that and talk about the parameters and that sort of thing. The question, what's on the agenda this evening is whether or not we enter negotiations with Encore, if that's not in the, in the cards, and we'll, we don't want to waste their time, we don't want to waste your time.
We don't want to waste, we don't want to waste your time then.
We can talk about, we can talk about what we want to do at the landfill site in regard to soliciting proposals perhaps at a future.
Have there been any other, have there been any other offers by competitors for the same?
No.
Have we sought any?
Uh, not since the last time we were looking at the landfill.
How long ago was that?
We haven't recently.
How long ago was that?
How many years ago, Stuart? At least two, three, maybe, maybe four?
Yeah, probably three to four years ago.
It's a very challenging site, so, um, not to say there aren't other folks out there who'd be interested, but this is a proposal that came to us. We've had good experience with these folks in the past. We wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to, to consider it, and certainly if it's not something you want to pursue, well, we've got plenty of other things to do, and I'm sure that Encore does.
Certainly do.
What's the proffer or the offer from Encore for the return to the town? You know, offhand?
Well, it's.
Dan, I think if, if in the future we're going to be looking to do an RFP, we probably ought not to.
Yes.
Discuss the details of this proposal.
Well, it is already out in the public.
Yeah, it is already out there, but.
But I don't, you know, we weren't prepared to discuss details today, we just wanted to know whether or not it made sense to, to spend some time with these folks, coming up with a, something that we all felt good about.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay, great. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Hazard mitigation plan review. 64 pages, or how many pages is it? I can't remember.
Dan, I think you're back on on hazards mitigation.
All right. Actually, I want to make Michael the most of talking about this, so. I'll just introduce Michael Batchor. He's a planner with the Bennington County Regional Commission. He has prepared a draft hazard mitigation plan for the FEMA regulations. All we're here this evening to obtain from you folks is authorization to present this draft to FEMA for their review. We will be back to you folks for a full review regarding adoption. So we wouldn't expect you to be ready to ask all sorts of questions this evening. We just want to make sure you feel comfortable with proceeding with the process. And we'll be back with you at some future date after FEMA reviews the plan. That can take two weeks, it can take eight months. And Michael will know even better about that, so we just don't know. We'll be back to you. But if you authorize us to proceed, we'll and Michael's here to make a brief presentation and answer any questions.
Great.
Michael?
You're up.
Thanks for the executive summary. It's a lot easier reading.
Yes, I summarized the entire 64 pages on one page.
Yes, well done.
So hazard mitigation, just to give you an example, the best example of hazard mitigation I can come up with is a culvert. So imagine a culvert going under a road and it blows out. And what you then have is an emergency, okay? You have to close the road, you have to fix the culvert, you may have to reroute traffic. Hazard mitigation basically looks at that kind of situation and says, well, maybe the culvert isn't large enough to handle the amount of water flow. If we can make the culvert larger, then we won't have an emergency. So we basically mitigate a potential hazard. So we went through the whole process that FEMA has developed for creating hazard mitigation plans. Now, let me make clear, you do not have to have a hazard mitigation plan. This is not required by the state. FEMA does not require hazard mitigation plans. It's not some, something from a top-down entity. But it does open the door for certain kinds of funding. There are hazard mitigation grants of several kinds that are offered by FEMA at different times. There are now, in fact, a new grant round is occurring for two different types of grants. And you have to have one of these in place in order to apply for those kinds of grants. And there is a provision that the state has created called the Emergency Relief and Assistance Fund. So when there is a disaster, FEMA provides 75% of the funding to address a disaster. In Irene, the state provided 25%. Now, what they're basically saying is they will provide a certain proportion of that 25% if you take a series of actions, one of which is if you have a hazard mitigation plan. It's basically like gaining points. So basically, what I'm saying is if you go through this process, much of which has already been done. Dan organized a planning team. We reviewed a lot of history of the town and of the county and looked at a series of hazards. Your handout identifies what we thought of as the priority hazards based on past occurrences. And then we developed a series of actions that would be taken over time, or could be taken over time, to reduce those different hazards. And those actions are all of many different types. Everything from capital improvements to education and outreach, to alterations of land use regulations and the like. Again, no one's going to come and say, you didn't do it, therefore, we're not going to be nice to you. But in the future, you should probably take a look at these actions over time and consider whether or not these are things to fit in your capital budget or the like. I mean, they're intended to be helpful as you plan projects in the future, both for capital and other improvements. So that's basically the nut of a hazard mitigation plan. The process of reviewing one of these things is a little time-consuming. FEMA really likes to have a lot of public involvement, so this is a public meeting where at least it's being introduced. We would want to, now that we've had a plan, it's something we can clip together, we would like to make that available to the public. We'd put it on the website. We would send it to surrounding municipalities, look for any comments, make adjustments if there are any comments. And then it goes to Vermont Emergency Management. And they can also comment. We need to make adjustments sometimes for that. Then it goes to FEMA and they comment. So it gets a lot of commenting. I've done a lot of these plans. Most of the comments are really minor. I can't promise you that. But in general, there are things like, well, one time I was asked, what is the coldest temperature it ever reached in Land Grove? So I had to go back and research all that. And that was the total comment. And it took a while to find that. And now your plan does have the coldest temperature we have in the nearest station. But they're not the kind of comments that are, they're really substantive. If they were, we should come back to you. So what I would, what I'm requesting the board to do is basically allow us to circulate this plan, go through the whole comment period, make the changes that are necessary, and ultimately send it to FEMA so that they can review it. With their processes, once they've reviewed it, they, and they're happy with it, they grant what's called a approval pending adoption, which means that once they approve it, then the select board can adopt the plan. And once they, you have adopted the plan, then FEMA actually grants formal approval and the plan is good for five years. That's it in a nutshell.
That's really, it's very helpful, Mike. Is there a motion to-
Motion to approve.
To basically let Michael do whatever he wants.
Or a motion to let this move forward.
Yep.
Second. And the only thing I would say is, Dan, you gave some better numbers. At the Planning Commission, there were some more specific numbers about the benefits from FEMA than this describes. Wasn't it something like 17.5% versus 25%?
Yes, basically, if you have no plan or anything in place, or you haven't adopted the town road and bridge standards, or you don't have an emergency operations plan and you do not have a hazard mitigation plan, you will get 7.5% of that 25%. Well, you got, instead of 25%, you get 7.5%. The state will provide 7.5%. You would have to provide 17.5%. That goes up depending on how many of those you have. If you have all four of those, then the state would provide 17.5%. And you would, as a match to the FEMA 75%, you'd have to put in 7.5%. So if you depend, look at how many zeros there are in that 25%, that can make a difference if it's-
Does the town of Bennington currently have any zeros? Does the town of Bennington have any zeros right now?
This is the only document that we don't have.
Okay, that's what, I mean, most people listening or watching would have no idea. So that's why I asked the question.
No, I think this would be in the event of a disaster where FEMA funding was available. So in other words-
So we would be checking all the boxes if we got this? Right now, we're only checking four out of the five?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, yes, four out of five we have.
Okay.
I think it also, Dan, maybe you correct me, the committee rating system, don't you get extra points for having a hazard mitigation plan? And therefore, that may help some people with their flood insurance premiums. Okay. I don't know how many people or who, but it could help someone.
Okay. Are there, is that sufficient for you?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody realized that by having this plan in place, it's more likely that we could do better from FEMA if we had another big disaster.
Yeah.
Significantly better. And there's not really a downside to approving it or to moving it forward, so.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion as presented, signified by aye? That's six in favor, no objections or abstentions. Thank you very much. Very clear. Appreciate this. This is helpful.
All right, thanks for having me.
You should send that to FEMA, this part. Okay, next item is the setting the tax rate for July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Yes, you have a memorandum attached along with Melissa's, the finance director's calculations. We are projecting a general fund increase of 4.2 or close to 4.3 cents. That does include agencies at a total cost of $336,760, which amounts to 3.3 cents out of that 4.3. The rescue squad is included within those agency figures at $207,000 plus, which amounts to about 2 cents out of that total 4.3 cents. The highway fund is projected to increase .76 cents. Fire department rate is projected increased by .0018. So the highway fund and the fire department, or fire fund, which is the interior fire department tax, are changing very little, minuscule amount. The big jump in our rate this year is the general fund. Had we not had the agencies approved on the ballot, the actual increase would have been under 2 cents, which is less than the current cost of living. So I think from a point of view of our budget and our work as a, as a team, I think you folks and the staff should be commended for the great job that we did. We do offer agencies the opportunity to appear on the ballot. And Bennington has been very, very generous in the past and was again last year in approving all of the agencies that petitioned for-
Stu, remind our constituents, what is responsible for the spike in funds in the general fund?
Well, the biggest jump in the general fund is directly related to the rescue squad.
And how much was it?
For $207,460, I believe. And that's part of that $336,760. So agencies make up a big portion of the increase. But those are all approved by the voters. The voters have looked at them and said, yes, we want this. So I am looking-
Going forward, Stu, next year, if the rescue squad comes to us soliciting the same amount of money, we'll be able to have access to their financials.
Well, I think the next discussion that this board should be having with the rescue squad is, and what was there, I think their desire last year, I think they would like to be included in the general fund, much as the Bennington Free Library is. So that you can sit down with them during the budget process and look at their historic trends and look at what they're trending for in the future, much more so than simply forcing a petition drive, which then gets you really nothing. You don't, you're not necessarily entitled to look at anything, because they are there via the petition and they're on the ballot. So I think you folks and the rescue squad board need to have that discussion as to whether or not you want to consider bringing them in under the general fund umbrella, much as we do the Bennington Free Library. But having said that, the total tax rate that we are looking with for within the village limits is $1.13.97. And I include at the bottom of the page that it appears that the homestead rate this year will decrease almost a penny. So there is some relief from the state education tax rate versus our general fund. But those, that's what I'm asking you to approve. The general fund rate, the highway fund rate, and the fire, we call it the fire fund rate, as presented.
Heard the manager's outline of the tax rate for the forthcoming, or actually, we're in the fiscal year. Could I have a motion to accept the rates as published?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion on the setting the tax rate?
I just want to make comment that it's, is it public or no?
Yeah.
We have a hand here. But I just want to make sure that we all recognize again that, you know, the value of understanding what's on those ballots when we come in to vote. And that goes out to all citizens. Because whether we're select for individuals on the streets, or a comment is always, why are taxes continuing to go up? And we just need to be mindful citizens as far as when we're going to vote. Know what you're voting yes for, know what you're voting no for. And please, take the time to vote. It really matters. And hearing Stuart talk about it now, we're just constantly reminded, it's very important.
It's also building on that, really important to note that our town staff and Stuart, your people work so hard to bring in a budget that's below inflation. And I really appreciate the fact that everything, every cost within your control was controlled to a point below inflation. And that's really an admirable thing. And I'm very thankful for the fact that you did that. If Bennington wants to vote for these agencies and wants to pay more, it's much like charity, you know, you vote for things that you want to pay for that are above and beyond the ordinary cost of doing business. That's great, too. And it expresses the generosity of heart. But it's really hard to have a big jump in taxes like this and explain it without really breaking down the fact that the town did everything it could to keep its expenses below the cost of inflation.
Jackie, could I-
Jackie. Sorry to make you have to walk up there. Thanks, Jackie.
Jackie Kelly, citizen of Bennington. I'm with Jim Carroll on this, that when agencies ask us for money, that we also should ask the agency to show us why. One of their books, how are they, how are they good stewards of their money? I noticed that some of the agencies that we contribute to as a town are very beneficial to the town as a whole. But they also get grants and things from other places and they continue to grow and provide services for us. Who would say no to the rescue squad, you know? But is the rescue squad using their money wisely? Do they need help? You know, like many of the places in town that provide help for people, they need continual help. Because there's nobody giving them money. So is the town part of their budget? And we should know that, you know, or we should, we should set a standard, some kind of a standard, that we'll give you this much money if you have this kind of matching funds, or-
Well, Jackie, I just want to remind you that when I objected to the petition for $200,000, because number one, I wanted to know what the salaries were at the rescue squad. And that was refused. And secondly, because if someone were called to, if the rescue squad were called to a residence and the person refuses to go, they don't get any reimbursement. And I suggested at the time, I'll be quick, I suggested at the time that these people be billed, because I know that this happens repetitively. So anyway.
They're all good points, and I think Jackie makes a good one. The thing is, we have, like with the Bennington Library, not using as an example, they're part of the review process. We get all the financials. We get that inquiry. We didn't do that, we didn't get that opportunity with the petition. Once you have a petition, it's all, you know, the only question that can be asked is by the electorate. And that wasn't asked. But next year, hopefully, we'll have that opportunity.
Yeah, very good.
All in favor of the tax rate as it is, signified by aye? That's six in favor and no objections or abstentions. Okay. The manager's report?
Just briefly, just a reminder that Wednesday night at 7:00 PM at the Tishman Lecture Hall at Bennington College, the state Vermont Agency of Natural Resources will be down in town to once again discuss the PFOA issues and how they relate to Bennington. There'll probably be some interesting news coming out of that meeting this week that will affect a number of the properties in Bennington. So stay tuned for that. And I just need for the board to authorize me to engage Jim Barlow, an attorney from the northern part of the state, to work with the Charter Review Committee. He has been recommended by our counsel, Rob Wilmington. He is willing, and I have an engagement letter sitting on my desk. And I just need you folks to authorize us to hire him to provide their assistance.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Would you, Mike, just give us a brief parameter of what you're proposing to hire him for? For how long?
It will be to assist the Charter Review Committee. I don't anticipate that he'll be down here for every one of their meetings. I think they're planning to meet weekly on Wednesdays during the noon hour to do their business. But they have asked him to come down on August 2nd, their next meeting. He'll probably lay out legalities of charters and charter languages and be available to assist them with legal wording and things like that, probably from his home. Now, for those of you who don't know, Jim Barlow was originally from Powell. He worked for the law firm of Jacobs, Lunt, Klink, and Scanlon for a number of years before joining the League of Cities and Towns as their chief counsel. He worked there for a good many years, basically teaching the legalities of governance throughout the state of Vermont. He's very well-qualified. He's a very affable guy. He left the league, went to work in South Burlington as their counsel. a very affable guy. He left the league, went to work in South Burlington as their counsel, and now has his own business up in, I believe it's Marshfield is where he lives.
Why wouldn't we use Rob?
Rob doesn't have the time. Rob has recommended that we pursue this through Jim.
Sounds like a good fit. I'd make a motion.
Yeah. And, and also, you know, we might be, as a board, looking to Rob for some counsel when the recommendations come.
Ultimately, when the recommendations come. That's a very good point, Tom. Thank you.
What's the cost? Is there a cost?
Uh, we don't, it depends. He's billing us an hourly basis. So it'd be how much they use him. We have set aside the board's contingency of $2,500 to assist with materials and secretarial services. Jim's costs will come out of the general fund legal services line item.
So motion to, a motion to engage Jim Barlow?
Yep.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Six in favor. No objections or abstentions. Stu?
And that's all I have.
Okay. Gene?
Nothing.
Carson, you had a couple of things that I, you shared with us.
Can I have a question? What is the general fund?
Go ahead. General fund. To identify what the general fund is.
Oh, the general fund is, is the, the fund into which all of the governing structures, governing bodies in Bennington pay a, a portion of. The, the town of Bennington, Village of Old Bennington, and the Village of North Bennington all pay the general fund. The general fund covers all of the administrative services, which would run the gamut from the manager's office, the select board's costs, recreation, the senior center, police, and solid waste. Those operations all come out of the general fund. The highway fund obviously is dedicated to highway expenses. And the fire fund is dedicated to fire, fire department expenses of the Bennington Fire Department only.
Why are we not having a meeting to help the senior center?
I'm sorry, I, I can't hear you.
I said, why is it not? Why is the senior center not, what, why try to help with the bus or whatever? Have there been, been this general fund?
They are, they are included as part of the recreation general fund amount. And it covers all of their expenses, staffing, building operations, fees and transportation costs that the senior center budget provides.
What do you mean by staff? One staff?
You have one full-time staff person. That's correct.
Yeah, that's your job.
That's correct. That's, it couldn't survive without that. Carson?
I had a number of questions that aren't agenda items, but, and they're probably too many to go through. But at the same time, maybe we can just get them on, on the minutes and then address them next meeting, or some interaction as far as when you post the minutes, however we want to have answers put to them. Just some questions relating to the most recent storm that came through. Most of the damage was over in the Housick, New York area. And I know those, those have raised, I believe, to the, to the level of FEMA funding. I'm not sure, but I, and I don't want to speak in behalf of them. But do we have any storm damage that's going to, that wasn't factored in from a budgetary level that we need to be concerned from a citizen standpoint?
The, the most serious storm damage, all of our storm damages have been repaired except for the section called Emmons Road. It's a small road that comes off of the Orbed Road, essentially up over the hill and into New York State. I don't believe there are any residences on the Bennington side of that road. But that road did wash out. And that will be the major expense, putting it back. But even that, given, given our, our labor and equipment, probably will not be overly significant and have a major budget impact. I believe that in Bennington County, we did have sufficient damages to help push the state over the top. So it can, it's now up to the governor to declare emergency funding available for those counties that suffered damages. Bennington was very fortunate. We were not the worst of the counties that suffered damages in those floods.
Great. Next question is just in respect to, I know we have a, a great future with the new town garage that went through. You, you spoke to me about this a little bit. No concerns currently with the move as far as unforeseen costs or anything associated with that, that, that wasn't planned for?
Uh, nothing at this time. We're moving along.
When are you planning, hoping to get in? Fall?
They're hoping to be in by the end of October.
And the vacation, or the vacating of the, the two town garages? Have any, has any new information come out on those as far as people interested? I know we had kind of an interesting concept put in the books for, that one in the media downtown?
We've been, yeah, we've been contacted by two, potentially three parties with an interest in, in at least the, well, actually, both garages, there have been some interest. We'll be developing, once the garages are vacant, we hope to have an RFP developed, which will then put them out to a public request for proposal process where we'll get ideas for development, as well as business plans and those kinds of things. So we'll be able to, I say we, but you'll be able to take a look at the proposals, determine what proposal is best fit for the community, what proposal is most likely to succeed. And we'll be able to award the sale based on those kinds of criteria.
Great. I think those are all exciting. Our new community development director, great news, most recently put in the paper a few weeks ago. Will she be able to join us at some point? Do you want to comment on how her joining your staff and?
She will be joining the staff July 31st. She and her husband are on, on vacation this week. So she was not available to come to this meeting. But she will be with us next Monday. And we, we imagine she'll be hitting the ground running. As I indicated earlier, Mike McDonough has agreed to stay on on a contract basis to continue working with Dan, very specifically on the TIF, and on those requests for proposals where his architectural experience will be very, very beneficial. He's being paid on an hourly basis for the hours he puts in.
Great. And then the last question that comes.
Before you leave that though, you know, I think that's great that we've got a new development director. I'm looking forward to meeting her, as we all are. Because that is a, I think Carson said the last meeting, you know, it's one of the more critical management jobs that, and right now, your staff is spread pretty thin with all the things that we keep demanding of it.
We, we hold you responsible.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Just keep it under inflation, Stuart.
Yes, this is right. But the, whatever we can do to both introduce her to the community and how, and share with her what we hope to get out of that position through you, the better. So I'm looking forward to next meeting, having her visit with us.
We'll certainly do that.
And thanks for answering the questions. It's just, I think it's helpful when people, you know, are able to see it on Facebook or, or watch it on CAD TV. The dialogue is helpful. Even if I know the answer to some of these questions, it's, it's better than just you and I. It's great for all. And then lastly, our water treatment facility, I'm sorry to continue to, to bring this up at every other meeting, but are there any updated quotes or information we need to make people aware of?
We are meeting with the engineer tomorrow. He will be in town with the state, state of Vermont personnel to specifically go over the RBC units to confirm what we're planning to do, which is to replace 30 out of the 32. He is at 90% complete on his design. Right now, it's, it's, the estimate is in the nine and a half to $10 million range for bond. It includes, as I said, replacement of the 30 units of the RBC, a pre-treatment at the headworks to deal with some of the unanticipated solids that come through the system, the rags and the towels and the other things that people dispose of incorrectly. And that, that tends to, they don't break down as well as they used to. And they tend to gum up the entire pumps and everything else in the system. So we'll be doing that work. That work is estimated in the $500,000 range. The RBC is estimated in the $3 million range. And there'll be some additional work on the electrical systems and on the digestors. We have a primary and secondary digestive system. Those will be upgraded. They won't be entirely replaced, but they'll be upgraded. Ultimately, the, the total cost is in the nine and a half to $10 million range. That includes engineering fees, contingency permit costs, as well as construction. And at the present time, we are planning to undertake the RBC replacements through a bid process to acquire the RBC units. But because of our experience in replacing two of them to date, and we should be putting another one in before the month is out, we believe that we can install those and save approximately a million and a half dollars cost as part of that project. So we hope to have at least one public and possibly two public meetings. Once his design is set and the state has said yes, we're, we'll also be talking with the state tomorrow about the, the funding lines and how, how those will work. So we'll have more detail for that as usual. And perhaps as early as the first meeting out in August.
And I know I keep asking those questions, Stuart. And thank you for answering them every time. But people, please pay attention to this. It's incredibly important and it's a massive line item.
Jim?
Nothing this week.
Come on, you did some madness, didn't you? What about all those downtown merchants that stayed open?
They stayed in the house.
Yeah, really? Well, downtown merchants get a good shout out for all the, all the effort they make and.
It was busy.
Trying to make Bennington a party.
I looked out the window on it.
Jack?
I'm also.
Okay. Do you have something?
I would like to make a motion to go into executive session for a matter of litigation.
Could I also add to the brief discussion of contracts?
And a brief discussion of contracts? Okay.
Be very brief.
It will be very brief.
Can I take a break?
Um, no, we're gonna go right to it. At least the first part.
We probably need a second and a...
Second? And any further dis-
Second.
You got, thank you very much.
It's your second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of going into executive session, signify? For the reasons being, we're in executive session.